I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings, everyone. Welcome to this first full day of summer, maybe? First off, I'd like to publicly thank David Austin and Lowell Bertrand for their service to our community. And then I would like to welcome Bill and Rennie to the council. Look forward to working with you for the next year. And congratulate Ziggy for her reelection. So, next we will go to our visitor, Hannah Weisman. Hannah, we're going to talk a little bit about the -- you brought up an issue about the creche or the nativity scene being on the park. So, I don't know where you want to start.
I'm happy to start. Mr. Hawley and I have been talking back and forth for a few weeks now. My concern is that the nativity scene on the green has no signage indicating its origin or its ownership. And so it appears that the city owns it, or at least endorses it, and is not really respecting the separation of church and state by having it there. So I just wanted to recommend to the city council that we have the nativity scene erected on private property such as a church yard. And also transfer ownership and management of the Ataguanyah Fund to a private entity so that the city can be uninvolved with that particular item. And I'm happy to -- I know we'll have a conversation tonight, but I'm happy to also continue the conversation after this meeting if we need to keep working on it.
No?
Yeah, as Hannah said, I, first off, relative to the fact that there is no signage in there. Clearly, I copied everybody with an opinion from the Secretary of State's office where they recommend that there be some signage there, running some history. I will tell you that I have had a conversation with Roger Hayes. Obviously, most of you know that Roger, for years, has coordinated both the storage of the nativity scene. I think it's stored at St. Peter's, as far as I know. The nativity scene is typically erected by volunteers from the Virgin's Lions Club. And I really don't know exactly what is needed on this sign. But in talking to Roger, Roger and I are going to work together, and I'm happy, Hannah, to work with you on this. I can -- the top 90 percent of it, both Roger and I feel, we need to tell a story about this, about the nativity scene. You know, many people don't know that Dave Obbin, who once owned your house, Rennie, who was a longtime postmaster, he built the original nativity scene, and it was his -- the city park was his front lawn, and he took care of it. And obviously, eventually, Dave passed away, and I think that Roger just picked up the ball. And I, obviously, years and years ago, it really just wasn't even given two thoughts about it, right? And I think that, given what Hannah's brought to our attention, you know, we really should, you know, we should not have something in the park with no sign on it because it certainly would and was perceived by Hannah as if this was a city project, and I explained that to Hannah. So I'm glad it was brought up in March as opposed to December. It's given us some time to work on an appropriate sign and story. Relative to the -- and as a matter of fact, if in fact, and as Mike, we talked a little bit before, we might want to incorporate that in our city, either in our city green usage policy or a separate policy because the city council has the full right to prohibit these things on city property. You're in control, as city council members, but you also have the right to condition the use of property. And I think that if there was some other type of holiday display that wanted to be there, then that too should have appropriate signage. So we would, you know, if that's the wishes of the council, we would, you know, at some point, put forth a policy.
Bill?
I read the email string, read the Secretary of State's letter. You sound, Hannah, with your initial statement, that you would prefer it not to be in the park. Is that true or ideally in your mind?
Ideally, in my mind, it would not be on public property. I think, you know, we've talked, and obviously, the Secretary of State's office has an opinion, and, you know, a letter of the law is obviously accepted.
So there could be a policy that nothing is there, in which case it goes somewhere else, and that would make you happy. There has, at very least, there has to be an explanation as to why it's there, and who owns it, and so on and so forth. Okay. I just wanted to, you know, it looks like there's one option here, and there's an option here, and I'm trying to figure out who wants one, so.
Right.
Cheryl?
I also feel that it really sets a statement when you drive into a town, that this is a Christian town. Not that that's anything wrong with that, but I mean, it really does hit you as, this is what, you know, we stand for. And I've had to have several conversations with my teenage daughter who wants to
Mine, too.
Know why, if the separation of church and state doesn't happen right here in my own town. So I agree with Hannah, that I'm not really sure that it's appropriate to have it there.
I have some questions. First of all, there are other religious, for example, the Christian school has their strawberry and ice cream social in the spring. They also have a children's fair. Right now, we have a sign on the green from the United Way. You know, I mean, the city doesn't, it's not a city function either. Is that, is this, and I understand, you know, that certainly understand the difference between a religious symbol and something like the United Way. But for someone who is completely secular, there may not be that much of a difference. Is the city supporting the United Way Fund? I mean, we do, maybe, but I'm curious about, in terms of precedent. And I certainly understand and respect your opinion, and I definitely agree, as far as, I didn't even know this fund existed. And do we ever spend money from it?
You talked about the fund. Let me switch gears, we'll talk about the fund.
Well, let me, I'll finish my train of thought. Any display on, you know, if you read the opinion from the Secretary of State, if there was appropriate information available to indicate that the city, you know, this is a public space, the city doesn't necessarily support it, should we provide that with everything that goes on the green, including the United Way, other functions, et cetera?
I don't know if that takes away from the coldness of the heart and not trying to make the warm and fuzzy place that we live. And that's the message we're trying to send out to the world, is this is a pleasant place to live. And how much, how many lines do we draw on the sand and create the division? Once you start getting dividing, you start clouding that warm and fuzzy feeling. So, Peter?
I'm a strict constitutional constructionist, so you can imagine where this is going. I believe in the absolute separation of church and state and have for, since my first con law class in college. It seems that a policy which says that there are no religious displays of any nature at all in a park would be in our best interest. That way, we don't have to determine what goes on at different times of the year. We don't have to be involved in religion at all, and it keeps us out. As opposed to a sign which is a half, it's a halfway measure. But the fact that that, whatever it is there, I don't know whether you guys remember, there was a menorah case up in Burlington three or four years ago. And it was the same sort of thing, it gave the appearance of a city endorsement, no matter what the sign said. So the direction that I would go in clearly on this is that we would ban any religious displays of any nature at all on the park. I wouldn't go as far as what Joan is saying, but it would just be religious in nature.
Okay, all right, yeah.
If that is the avenue that we go down, we ban everything. Everything.
Everything.
No matter.
And if you do that, may I just insert a little bit here? Is because we have a, one of our events is the holiday stroll, and in the evening, we do a tree lighting. Now, does that cross the line or border the line? Are we going to do away with one of our events that draws people into the city to spend money?
Tree lighting isn't religious to me.
But it's a holiday, it's a Christmas. Some people don't believe in Christmas. That's where, you know, it kind of led to. And again, we want to try to meet everybody's side, so I'll stop at that point.
Well, the counter side of that is too, is that we shouldn't do the pumpkins in the park, we shouldn't sponsor the haunted forest because we're offending, we could be potentially offending somebody else.
I disagree with that.
Yeah. The issue isn't offending somebody else. The official, the constitutional issue isn't offending somebody's religion. Constitutional issue is something that gives the appearance that the city endorses this particular religion. And, you know, the examples that you're giving, I think, aren't religious at all in my mind.
Rennie, did you have something?
Yeah. I don't know whether we've checked with the Episcopal Church. There's a little, there's more history to this whole issue because when I was manager, this also came up. It was brought up by a newspaper that won't be named, and it's not this newspaper. And they were asking about it and why it was on public property. And I provided to them similar information that Mel did about the fund and the fact that it wasn't city-owned, and we didn't put it on the park, we just allowed it to be there. And at that time, that newspaper chose not to do any articles on it because they, I think there's a 50-year history. I think it's been there for 50 years or something like that. And they chose not to make it an issue because I said to them, if you make an issue of it, we'll probably have to remove it. Having been through this in another municipality where a creche scene was on the city hall lawn when I was city manager, and we looked at the U.S. Supreme Court decision, and our legal counsel said, remove it. And we removed it and gave it to a local church, which was right next to city hall, and they took care of it. It's a tough issue for me because I know the community backing for it, and it's been here for a long time. But I think from a legal perspective, it really doesn't belong there. And it would be nice if the Episcopal Church was interested because it's right beside the park. So the effect would be about the same, but not on city property.
So, would you like to make a motion to request from the Episcopal Church if they'd be willing to take over any display or? You know, Methodist Church might be available as well.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion, may I ask, please?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with you, Hannah. Are you a Virgin's resident? I am. I'm glad to hear that. I believe that we have a lot of history here. I believe that constitutionally, we have the right to free speech. There's a letter separating church and state. I'm not legal counsel, but the city could have legal counsel about this. This, to me, seems to be something that needs to go before the people, a vote, much higher than just our city council. This is something that is historical in our area, just as much as McDonough things are historical. Ben's Spark frogs are historical. These are things that many, many people in our area call valuable, are invested in emotionally. And my view as a Virgin's resident is that it should go before the people.
May I be, right?
I don't know whether it would require a vote of the city council as far as inquiring with the Episcopal Church. I think that the city manager, or I'll do it, can call them and see if there's any interest at all. And, I mean, we have some time, whether they have any interest in it at all.
If you're talking, you know, the Episcopal, if you're talking about the nativity scene moving on to the Episcopal Church's property, we don't need to call them, it's their property, they can do whatever they want with their property, you know.
You just need to do, we would need to decide.
That would be a viable option.
Yeah, it was an option after.
Bill?
I'm a member of the Virgin's Lions Club, and as a member of the Virgin's Lions Club, I think it's probably, it is owned by the Lions Club, and the Lions Club is responsible for setting it up. Probably should be their responsibility, or our responsibility as a club, to contact Episcopal Church.
Sure, I agree.
And see if, see if they'd be open to it.
The Lions Club doesn't own it. It just, because I've done it for many years, it takes it down and puts it back into the same field.
They are responsible for setting it up and maintaining it and moving it and storing it.
Peter?
We're talking now about a very, very specific situation, but what we're really talking about is a much broader situation. We're talking about religious displays on public property. In this case, it's a creche, but it could be a menorah, it could be the equivalent of any other religion. And it's all, for me, it's all exactly the same issue. You know, I appreciate the history, certainly, and understand that, but it, it's broader than just the creche. That seems relatively simple to deal with in terms of what we're talking about. But that doesn't prevent somebody else from coming in from another Christian religion, wanting another Christian display during the holiday season, for example, unless we do some sort of broad policy speaks to the issue.
Sure.
My name is Margaret Karen. We live in Fersberg, we own property, Virgin's would pay tax here. We are Roman Catholic. That display's been there, I think, for 37 years. I'm also constitutionalist, and it says freedom of religion, not freedom from religion. Nobody, I mean, it's not harming anybody. I think it's adding to the community. People come to see that display. Pardon?
From any town?
Yes. And I think it does a lot for the town. And apparently, you, we got here late, sorry, but. I think if we're going to take any action on this, I think that it should be discussed more amongst the town, the city, I should say, and maybe bring it to a vote. Because I think if you pull it out of the park, it might be better to go into this a little more controlled and get a feeling from the town, from the city folks. And also, I mean, like I said, there's people from all around. So, and if you talk about Christian churches, I think they're all going to, you know, they're all obviously going to approve of this display. But I would say that we should not rush into this, and that we should go into it thoughtfully and see the impact to the city. Because like I say, it's been there for many years, and people come from far and wide just to see that display. And, you know, probably not from a secular view, but if you separate faith and reasoning, when you start doing that, you know, you have a lot of trouble in our society and our culture. And I think this adds, and this gives hope to people. And I'd hate to see that hope that we see eroding away in our country. And we have this opportunity to present this as a, to our, to the people around here, as a, as hope. And I'd hate, I'd hate to see that go away.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
I understand and respect your opinion, but, you know, I think Rennie kind of made the point that in terms of legality and the legal, the legal force, that, you know, it's pretty obvious that this is the way that most of these cases have gone. And we're not talking about the disappearance of the, of the scene. We're talking about maybe moving it, you know, 50 yards north. So in my opinion, you know, I'm disappointed. I enjoy seeing that display on the, on the city green. And I, you know, I certainly understand that that doesn't, that doesn't imply city involvement in religion or even a city recognition, just that they provide the space. But I really feel like, in light of what Rennie said, that this is something we really should consider, maybe moving it off the, off the green.
Ziggy, did you have something you wanted to offer?
Yeah, I do. Like Mel said, if you put a sign up, you know, stating what's going on, explain why it's there. We do not own it, and I understand what everybody else is saying also, but I also agree with those people out there. Let's let the voters decide.
What I wonder about, Mike, is, is, it sounds like that the case that you're talking about, Rennie, may have, may have occurred prior to 1997.
Yeah, there's probably new law to.
Yeah, and so it seems as though, the more current, if this, you know, I don't, we just, we just get this from the Secretary of State's office, and it makes reference, you know, to this 1988 and 1989 case, and then it makes reference to this 1997 case, and the Secretary of State's office ended up drawing this conclusion, all right? And so it sounds like it's something that the court system has, you know, flip-flopped a little bit.
Sounds like politicians in Washington. Did I say that?
I personally don't think that we can, I'm certainly not one to vote on, like, the separation of church and state tonight, of what Peter would like. I think it might be wise to communicate with the Ecumenical Council and all the churches, see if there's a place to put it, see what their take is on it. They have to understand the laws as much as we do. Try and communicate with everybody as to what the options are, and maybe there's a solution that we can come up with without having, you know, a lot of devices. And that may take another few weeks, but I think we have a few weeks.
Rennie?
Yeah, I just raised this as an, as an option to consider. I mean, the sign is one option, whether a church, whether it's the Episcopal Church or some other church, wants to take responsibility for it. It's an option that we can exercise.
So, so that's a direction, would basically say, any religious institution of any nature who wants to put a religious display in the city park could do that as long as we put up a sign that said, this doesn't represent the city of Virgin's.
It's a form of freedom of speech, possibly.
So on Easter Sunday, for example, you could have crucifix in the middle of the city lawn as long as you put a little plaque next to it that says, city doesn't endorse this.
That is a possibility? Cheryl?
Can I ask what the policy states now?
It's silent. We do not have a policy, to my knowledge.
There's no policy on what happens at the city in the city green at all?
There is. Oh, yeah.
There's a policy, but it doesn't cover.
We have a policy on uses in the city green, but it's silent relative to the nativity scene.
But if somebody wanted to put something up, there's a pattern, there's a, there's a process to go through according to our policy for use of the green?
Yeah, I'll try to answer the hypothetical question because, you know.
I was just curious if somebody else wanted to put something up that was a similar, how would it go about?
Because we don't, because we don't have a policy, all right? We, you know, I mean, the nativity scene has been put up there for 50 years, whatever many years it's been. And that comes up and it goes down, all right? Now, let's say if, you know, some, if there's some other request that they want to put it up, or if let's say somebody just goes in there and puts it up, okay? I mean, because, you know, that, those are the two options. You know, Joan, Joan does not have the authority on her own to deny or approve. Typically, events are scheduled through Joan, you know, on a first-come, first-served basis. Relative to, you know, these kinds of displays, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a policy.
That's why it's silent, because there's just nothing.
That's correct.
I'm in agreement that the nativity should stay, or that's my feeling, I should say, with a sign. I'm also afraid if it goes, what kind of precedent can we set here as it was stated before? What's next, Memorial Day parade because an anti-war group comes in? It opens up, we have a friendly little town, as the mayor said, and it opens up potentially the park being used for nothing but frisbee, and maybe not even that, because it's, someone could get sued. So I think we're setting quite a precedent here both ways. I think we could be, we could be a shining star here in communities and say, we will let anyone use this park as long as they say who they are and what their agenda is, really. It's a nativity scene showing the birth of Jesus. It's whatever, it's whatever, as long as we're saying it's not sponsored by the city. We're taxpayers, we should be able to use that property the way that we do. We have freedom. That's my feeling.
Thank you. Any other comments? Next step, bring in the clergy and see what input, and then give it people a chance to mull it over in their mind and figure out where we.
I'd be happy to talk to, I know Gary Lewis pretty well, probably better than the other, the other ministers and so on and that. I think if we were to approach them and explain and say, look, you know, is there something? You need to understand, you know, the legality of it and the options. And, you know, whether it's a sign on it, whether it's moving it to an adjacent parcel, I think it'd be nice to know all of the options and make the public understand the options as well before we just vote on something.
Rennie?
I would ask Andy to, Andy, is he listening? He's writing, he's writing.
Talk slower.
That if he would bring this out and have, in some way, that the public will contact this board and let us know. I would like to, I'd like to hear from him. I have my own personal opinion, but I want to hear from the greater, the greater masses.
I would offer my city mayor at myfairpoint.net email address as a place to send comments. I seem to be getting a lot of petitions, so why not have some comments? And I will share each and every one of those with the board members. I'd be at the focal point and then dispatch it out to.
I guess, one thing, Mike, as I mentioned earlier, I'm happy to work with Hannah, with Roger Hayes on developing, on developing what would be the context of the sign. But having said that, you know, if there's a majority of the city council that wants this off the park regardless of sign, I would really prefer not to spend my time working on that. So, and I'm not necessarily saying I want you to vote tonight, one way or the other. I'm just saying, you know, I would, I just don't really want to waste my time, or Hannah's time, or Roger's time. And so I'm happy to do nothing until the board gives me some, gives me some direction. And if that direction is to craft, is to craft language on a sign, I'll do that. But I'm not, I'm not hearing that clear direction to language.
I'm going to ask for a show of hands, three possibilities. In favor of leaving it there with, get the signage totally removal, or abstaining, in that order. So can I see a show of hands of those that would be in favor of leaving it there as is, with the sign? Just so I can get some direction toward Mel.
I guess I will.
I'm certainly not prepared to make any decision on it. I don't know what the options are.
This is just, this is impartial, this is not official, it's not going to be recorded. I just wanted to see if we got enough leaning one way or the other so that I can give Mel some guidance to, he can start the work, doesn't mean it's going to end up there.
I would say, since we have so much time, that Mel shouldn't bother to write anything yet and then see what we find out.
I agree, I agree too.
Then I'd ask for motion to table. So move.
Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Joe. This item is tabled. No more discussion.
Question? On table or table to a time specific? Two different things.
I would say at the next meeting.
Okay.
Keep it, keep it going, keep it.
Table to a time.
You agree on the, on the?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, seconded. All those in favor to table this to the next meeting? Never mind, we don't have to do it. Okay.
You already voted.
You didn't vote?
No, you didn't vote. You don't have to vote. It's a, it's, oh, excuse me.
There's no debate.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, Gary, I'm having one of my senior moments. Okay. Hannah, we're on hold, and our next meeting, good Lord willing, the creek don't rise, if I can find my schedule, it should be April tenth. Okay. All right, uh, next thing on the agenda is warrants.
One, one of the things I, you know, Rennie brought up, uh, a question on, on the warrants. One, let me just first, I'll premise that relative to the warrants, you know, on Friday, when we put the agenda out, uh, we gather up all the bills, the only, it's the only way that I can tell where, where the budget's at is by paying bills. There is an encumbrance feature in there, we don't use it. We pay bills, then we, then we know where we're at. So what we do is, is we process this warrant on Friday, and you'll see no check numbers to the right of that, and that's because we haven't printed checks. And then on Tues, on Tuesday morning, what we do is we gather up all the bills that have come in on Monday and Tuesday, and, uh, anything that needs to be paid gets added. So if you're wondering why there's a little difference between what was mailed to you and what you signed, that's, that's one of the reasons. The other thing, I will tell you that there was a change in one of the bills dealing with Greenmount Power, in that, uh, Greenmount Power has issued a twenty-nine-hundred-dollar credit for our January bill, and it made it to the point that that bill, uh, ended up being in the negative, a credit bill of twenty-seven-hundred dollars, all right? And the problem is, is that we have, we have twenty-three different electric bills that we pay, and you can't use a credit from one bill to pay another. And so that check had to be rewritten from, let's say, three thousand dollars to six thousand dollars because, uh, that twenty-seven or twenty-nine-hundred-dollar credit has to be eaten up with, with future bills, and so that, that, uh, that got changed. Rennie brought up, uh, one of the invoices, you'll notice, or one of the checks, and it's a check that was cut to the town of Rochester. And, uh, just to let you know, back, uh, post-Irene, uh, obviously Rochester, like a lot of communities, were in desperate need of help. And, um, I was able to send down our Public Works, uh, some of our Public Works crew to Rochester, uh, along with vehicles, and, uh, worked for them for a few days, and, uh, the way that we handled that is that once we got our work done, I billed the town of Rochester for our work with the full intentions that when Rochester sent us their check, we would in essence send them their check back, all right? And, uh, I know Joan told me in November that the check came in, but it must've just, it must've had a senior moment, because anyway, we've, we've been holding on to Rochester's money here for three months, so that thirty-one-hundred dollars or whatever that is, that's, it says Irene Assistance is what we've, uh, what we've described it at, and it's, it's basically a one-hundred percent refund, if you will, of, of that original, of that original bill.
Any questions on?
I, I have one quick question and one comment, um, just because I don't know this budget as well as the rest of you. Um, income, other interest earnings, almost two-hundred percent increase, what's that based on?
Well, one of the things, the way that our interest earnings, you know, interest earnings works, Bill, first off, is we have our money in, in really four different places, if you will, or four different funds, I should say. We have a general fund where all of the money, uh, is, is put into, we have a separate Ray Davison Fund.
You can make it quicker than this if you want to.
That's all right. And a, 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 a separate Davison Fund and a separate Donnelly Fund, which is the Blaney Fund, and we have another one, a co-op account with another fund. The, any of these funds, they actually, they hold certificates of deposit, they hold treasuries, and those treasuries and certificates act, actually change in fair market value, all right? And so one of the, that's right. So one of the things that happened to us is we suffered a paper loss, if you will, in June of eight or nine or ten thousand dollars. And then in July, it all got made up, uh, and so what this, what that thirty-nine thousand dollars is, is just, uh, that's really how much, it's, I don't really call it earnings, it's actually, the way that our auditors do it, it's the difference in fair market value of those funds today versus where they were on, on the first of July.
And the one quick comment on the bottom of page nine, um, you've got the, the, uh, revenues for the funds?
Yep.
There's no title for that. You know, if it's something like fund accounts or something like that, so that you can tell what it is?
Page nine, where you're talking.
Bottom of page nine. Water tower revenue, water tower.
That's a budget, that's a budget.
Yeah, but there's no, no title for that column of numbers under nine, six, oh, one, oh, one.
But this, this is warrants.
Oh.
We're on warrants.
The, uh.
But it says a review budget report too.
The budget is a, is a separate issue.
Oh, okay. So it's the interest earnings.
Yep. No problem. But as long as he's on budget, let's keep rolling.
I see what you mean, yeah, because the, uh, you're saying that it doesn't have a, it doesn't have a header.
Right.
It just says.
Just want to know what it is.
Well, one of the things, it's, it's, to us, it's Fund Nine, okay? And actually Fund, uh, you know, probably what would be helpful, Bill, is we also produce, produce what's called the Trial Balance, which basically tells you the assets in all of those funds. So I think what you're, what would be helpful for really everyone is what, what is Fund Nine? And Fund Nine actually holds about eighteen different funds. Reappraisal Fund, Restoration Fund, uh, you know, Book Restoration, Book Computerization.
And they were on the town report, I saw them all and so.
It's all, I can't, you know, like, so like I say, we, we have a, a, a General Fund, Fire Fund, Recycling Fund, Sewer Fund, Swimming Pool Fund, Fund Six is Community Development, Fund Seven is the, the Greenmount Power Co-op, Fund Eight is Capital Projects, which is primarily sewer-related, uh, capital funds, and Fund Nine is the all-other.
And that, that's fine, as long as, yeah.
But what you're not seeing, what you're, what you're seeing is the revenue and the expense, and you're not seeing the, the actual asset itself. And that, yes, that's in our, in our financial statements, but we can actually produce a balance sheet that can show you that, show that it has in it, and that's, uh, could be helpful as well.
Does anybody else have any questions as far as budget goes? More on it? Randy?
Just in Public Works under Traffic.
Page?
Page three.
Thank you.
And, um, there was a big jump in expenditure.
Yeah, well, happen.
Did we play something?
Well, what we think happened is, you know, that line item typically is just paying electric bills, you know, for the traffic light and the caution lights. Uh, and, and for years, we never really had any problems, all right? Well, one of the things that happened is somehow the, uh, the, there's a, uh, a magnetic field line out in the, in the road, it's a lane detector, right? And somehow that got severed, and so we had to have, uh, the company CEA, I think it is, to come and do that. So we've never seen a repair bill hit that line item, and that's where, that, that was, that's the, that's the proper description.
I think it got severed doing that sidewalk, didn't it?
It could've.
I think it did, yeah.
Yeah.
Infamous sidewalk.
Another ghost appears.
Do you need a motion on the warrants?
Just sign. No, just, just sign. Does anybody else have any questions about, as far as budget report? Hearing none. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the city council meeting February twenty-first, two thousand twelve.
You made said motion.
Randy made the motion, do I have a second? And Peter made the second. Uh, any omissions, corrections, or errors? None noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, committee reports, uh, anybody got anything to report? I know the chill and.
Just that, uh, Recreation Committee's moving to set up a meeting. We had some email exchange last week, and then I, I went out of town, and I haven't been able, had a chance to follow up, but we'll, we'll be setting up a meeting shortly.
Okay, excellent. Ziggy?
The seniors are overwhelmed. First of all, the whole group that's down there at the St. Peters Hall for their meals will be going over there. They're all ecstatic about that. And a lot of the seniors, of course, that are going in there also, everybody seems to be happy right now.
That is, they've started occupying it, correct?
Yeah.
So, yes. And we haven't heard incident as far as a, uh, ground, or not a groundbreaking, but a, uh, opening, grand opening?
Yeah, I have not heard about any celebration. Mike, I, I think Mike gets, they want to get the landscaping done, you know.
So it'll probably be May.
There was a small something last week.
Open house thing.
Flowers there, but I don't think it was very big.
No.
They had an open, they had an open house last.
Sunday.
Was Sunday, was it?
It was Friday and Monday, Friday and Monday.
Right.
And also the comment was that they should, they should have not one more building over there, but two more buildings over there. When, they asked when the barn was, had been taken down, I guess this past week.
Yeah.
Oh, so this is where the next one's going to go? And I said, "I really don't know." Well, then you've got one across, you've got one there, that makes two more. And I said, "Okay." I just thought I'd pass it on.
The statement has been made a couple times to a couple of different individuals, and they are in the process. Terry's tied up with, I forget what town he's in, but he's, uh, working, is it Millbury?
Yeah, I don't know.
He's, the guy that was driving this boat, uh, is tied up on another one, but they know real loud, they heard real loud the comments that we sent to them when we took our stance, that we want another one, and they say that they could fill it, and RB is just coming up with the funds.
Right, um, the only other thing that they mentioned, and I said I didn't think we had control, was that the sign out there, twenty-five miles per hour, they got all along that road right up to the Legion, twenty-four miles.
It's not a city street.
That's what I told them. I said, "We really, well, this lady, she says, 'Well, when I get out there in my scooter and somebody wants to challenge me, don't be taking me because I'm going to take a ride.'" I said, "Okay." I mean, they were so funny. I didn't think a scooter would.
Be careful when I go over there, how I drive.
Mike, can I add to that too?
Sure.
Um, I'm moving with my mom this weekend into the apartments, and that open house was absolutely critical to, for so many people to see what they had bought into but had not seen it yet, and they are beautiful. They, they are absolutely beautiful. Their cabinets and the kitchens are to die for, which is really important for some people, with, with shelves that come out, and the lazy Susan's really nicely done for, for our seniors, really impressive.
They're, they're hoping that if they can move to a second one, they can hopefully use, uh, the same contractor. They would be able to save a lot of money, uh, in all the work that would have to be done, that would speed up the process and turn a building over faster, so. Yep, they, they did. Yep, so if, if those that haven't, and when they, if they do have another open house, hopefully the information will get out, and by all means, please, go visit the site. Uh, they're very energy-conscious, they have solar on the roof, they have a pellet boiler, uh, that's working. So, very good. Um, at the next council meeting, I, I would like to just, uh, the different committees to see if any of the council members would like to change hats. So if you're on something now and, and you want to rotate to something different, um, if it would help, I can send an email around to everybody just telling, uh, what the different committees are. I mean, you know, farmers' market, uh, seniors, uh, there's, there's other one, um.
Fishing Derby.
Fishing Derby, there's the, uh, Partnership, there's, there's, so there's, there's a variety of different committees that people, we like to try to get people to sit on, on, and try to be as an active member as possible and so that, uh, there's a good communication back to us so that not everyone on the council has to go to every meeting, and it's, it's very, very busy. So, think about that. The other thing that I would like to propose is that each council member comes back to set one measurable goal for this coming year, uh, and people, please, keeping taxes down, that's a given, so you can't use that one. Okay? We know that. That's our goal, so, okay. Next, I would like to open the meeting for public comment. Does anybody have any comment that they'd like to offer? I know Shannon does, because he was here last night, and he's here a second night in a row. He had, he had so much fun last night, he came back tonight.
It was the last, actually.
It was great.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to reiterate that we had a very well-attended, uh, public hearing last night for the draft zoning and subdivision regulations. Uh, we took a great deal of really good public testimony. Uh, the commission is now figuring out, we're, we're trying to meet before our next regular scheduled meeting so that we can consider all of the public testimony that was held. So, um, that will be forthcoming to you as soon as we can finish the process.
Excellent. As Shannon said, the, uh, they did have a, a good turnout last night, it was very productive, and I want to thank the committee again. I thanked them last night, thank them again tonight. They're doing an outstanding job, and, uh, it's, it's, it takes a lot of work, lots and lots of work. Shannon was, uh, telling you how many, over two-hundred and some odd hours, uh, that they put into this and the number of meetings and whatnot, so it's, it's, uh, it's great. Thank you. Um, any other public comment? Hearing none, then we're going to move on to. Oops, I'm sorry.
Second thought. I didn't introduce myself last time either. It's Mary Harris, I'm sorry. I just think it's appropriate that we thank Bill Benton and Randy Perry for their hard efforts in getting here, the people voting for them, and that goes for all of the rest of you as well, the hard work that you do to make the city come together, be united, work as a team, and represent us together as a group, and I just want to thank you guys for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, um, then we'll go to number six, uh, adopt, uh, our conflict of interest policy. It's an annual thing that we have to do. We just got done tweaking it, so, um, I'd ask for a motion first. Peter makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Randy. Uh, now we'll open up for discussion. Is there any? It's new to Randy and, and Bill, they just got handed it tight, so.
Looked good to me when I read it.
Okay, well, we'll have it for another year, and if we need to change it.
Yeah, we can use this one for, I'll bring it down there, we'll have one for signing, if you can start it, Bill, and work it back way for Joan, so she can record that.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Now we come to.
One thing, Mike, uh.
We'll get to the fun part?
No, I, uh, one of the things, I, uh, when I put this agenda together, there's actually two, two, uh, agenda items that I need to change. One is relative under the appointments, uh, the reappointment of the Fishing Derby Committee, I don't have a list here.
It's on my committee.
Okay. And the other one deals with, uh, a downtown grant application, and I'll explain that when I get to my, my city mayor's report.
Okay, you've been advised of those changes, thank you, Mel. He entered Senior Alderman, and it's actually, it's whoever wants to run for it, uh, the last four years.
Yep, I think so.
Randy's been the Senior Alderman. Uh, is there anybody else that would like to oppose Randy?
What's deputy mayor mean on the sign? Is it the same thing?
It's wrong. There is no such thing per our charter as deputy mayor. It's Senior Alderman.
It's been that way for fifty years.
And that'll be, if you're reappointed, that will be corrected, so.
So you're going to correct it by then.
We're going to get you a new nameplate. We don't want, following advertisement.
Only if you win, though.
But only if you win. So is any, anybody, uh, would like to nominate another council person for Senior Alderman? Or, we have a nomination for Randall for Senior Alderman. Is there anybody that would like?
I'll second.
Second it? Any other ones? Hearing no other nominations, all those in favor of Randy being the Senior Alderman? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So carried.
Shouldn't I abstain?
You should.
Yes. No, 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 I don't mind, it's just a technicality.
Is, you sure there's a conflict of interest there?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Okay, um, try to, try to multitask and sign my name at the same time. My wife says I can't do that, and she's proven it a couple times.
In the restroom, if you want to go to the slate, is okay, Mike.
Let's, let's just, uh, the only addition here, uh, like Mel said, is the Fishing Derby. I took and ran copies of all the names that you sent me.
Yep.
They have copies of them.
Okay.
So, they have that information, so that's part of that. If you want a second to review it, I can give that to you. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to adopt all those as indicated in.
I'll make that motion.
Number seven. Ziggy made the motion. Have Randy seconded it? Any other discussion? Here, yeah, Zig?
Um, Lowell was on this committee.
We're going to the Fishing Derby. We're going, Randy, Randy has, and that's what. We're going to the fishing derby, we're gonna, Rand- uh, Randy has, and that's what we'll bring up next week.
All right.
With the, the hats switching, or next meeting.
He may still wanna be on the committee too.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So, all those in.
Quick question, I had uh some other interest on being involved in the recreation committee. You know, if we choose to enlarge that, I just bring it to the council and we vote on it, that's pretty much how it works.
Yeah. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carried?
And regional planning commission, you're looking for someone, it sounds.
And you're looking for someone.
I'm not looking for something, I did that twenty-five years ago.
Okay, item number eight, police station site alternative ranking. Mel, you're gonna just talk briefly on this?
Yeah, what, what I'd like to do, uh, to tell you the truth, when I, when we embarked upon this whole uh thing, I, I never even thought about what do we do if we end up with changing new people out of city council. This is what I would like to do, uh, and I didn't bring it tonight, but I, what I'd like to do for Bill and, and Rennie is to get the original memo that came to, uh, came to me from, uh, from Chief Merkel. Uh, there's also uh a, attached to that is a, is a memo that I put together uh that gives some background as to where, in our, in our municipal plan about that policy. Attached to that is, is an initial ranking sheet. And then uh after that, there's a second ranking sheet that eliminates five of those. And so what I'd like to do is at least to get you two with all of the information that this group uh had up to this date and get your ranking numbers, uh, you can, you can, you can go ahead and give me, you know, the ranking, ranking sheet number one and ranking sheet number two in that order. And I'll give you, I'll give you the, the criteria that were used in, in ranking those. And that way, when we get to the next meeting, uh, we can uh have, uh, have all seven of your numbers uh of which five of, five of the folks have already filed their numbers, but they're sealed in a mayonnaise jar at, at city hall, so. Uh, so we'll, we'll get that to you before the next, next, next meeting.
Hopefully if it's not clean, it's in the refrigerator. Joan, you wanna take care of that? Okay, so they're gonna do that, and so we're just gonna put this on hold until, till the next meeting.
Right.
Uh, item number eight B, uh, first congregational church of Virgin's old cemetery trust fund uh and responsibility, Mel.
Uh, as you can see, I, I, I really don't think that this requires any, uh, any formal action. I think that uh there was a time when the church uh requested, if you will, that the city uh transfer responsibility to the congregational church. And that is what happened for the past forty or fifty years, and as you can see based on this letter, uh, they wish to relinquish that to the city. So, to me, all that needs to happen is that the record should reflect uh and this letter should be, should be incorporated into the minutes. And relative to the money, uh, I think, you know, Joan just needs to do, request the funds.
Fund number nine.
Fund number nine, exactly. And then, uh, you know, at some point, we should, you know, discuss governance uh options for how we wanna, you know, if in fact we, you wanna have a separate committee or commission or whatever. The, the statute on, on running cemeteries, um, have all kinds of alternatives. And uh, uh, you know, obviously, this is, this is, this amount of money, to me, it, it's a separate fund. Uh, you know, it too will require some policy uh as to how funds are appropriated uh from here. So this, uh, you know, there's, there's some work ahead of us, i- if you will. You know, Jimmy, uh, Jimmy Larrel, he, the, he knows that, uh, you know, it is, it is a facility and obviously the care of that facility either is done by the public works department or contracted to, to someone else. So, uh, we haven't discussed exactly, uh, you know, how we're gonna handle that, whether or not it's done in-house or, or via contract and, uh, obviously, uh, the lawn is growing as we speak here. We're gonna be mowing probably, probably before, uh, before the next meeting. But we just gotta figure out whether or not we're gonna, like I say, uh, have this be a part of the normal duties of the public works department or, or contract it out.
So what I gather here, this old cemetery, Virgin's is, is, this is Virgin's Cemetery, we're responsible for that one. Do we have any other cemeteries in Virgin's that we are responsible for?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
McDonald McIntoshes.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, we own that land, yeah, we own the nine acres.
One plot, but it's still.
Yeah.
So the money that we get, that we have gotten from the congregational church will be used towards just this one cemetery, the old cemetery. Well, supposed to be, isn't that's what it was designated for?
I would assume that that's, uh.
Would that include like taking care of headstones and trying to put things back together there?
Whatever, whatever, whatever maintenance.
Well, it depends on what we call maintenance. I mean, some of those stones been sitting in the ground. When I was a kid, I used to pull them out of the dirt, try to clean some.
Please, please are monitoring this. And there's no statute on that, by the way.
Oh, all right, but I was, I mean, they were laying in the ground, I tried to pull them back up and stand them up, like rocks and stuff. So I just wondered.
Um, my kinda real out of the box thinking here, are we crossing over at all into uh any religious type thing here? Is anybody, before, before we go down the road, I just wanna make sure that we have a comfortable feeling, ready here.
I don't, I don't think so, but. Uh, I, I was just thinking that, um, as a way maybe of relieving public works of having another place to take care of is whether we could, uh, contact either, uh, Job Corps to see whether they wanna have it as a, as something to take care of, or maybe some of the service clubs uh who would take it on as a kind of a project responsibility. Um, and, I mean, if, if they don't do it well, then we can always take it over, I mean, we're always there, but, um.
They had done that in the past, I think. I've heard some rumors that, uh, either a service club would kinda take charge or at one times, uh, they just chose to hire a, a lawn service, so.
That would free up some funds from that fund to actually do some repairs or some smaller improvements too.
And as.
Save you can put back into it.
As Susan Furlan, uh, reported to us, uh, if you were to try to get any money to do anything at cemetery for as far as grants, because you have twenty-seven thousand dollars, you aren't gonna get it, so it would be.
I mean, I was thinking of it along the lines of the various spots that we have on Main Street where the companies, uh, take care of it. And they choose to pay to take care of it, but they could have actually, you know, maybe employees would go over and take care of it. Um, but maybe this, people would have interest because it's so historic that people may actually really have an interest in taking care of it.
We, we might talk to Susan and see if she knows of, uh, somebody that'd be willing to, uh, try to get something started there. Because I know that, like they said, there's a lot of work on stones that needs to be done. I don't know if there's enough money to take care of that, nor if that, that's where the money. Almost would like to form a committee at some point to do some research there.
We've gone down to the Gage Cemetery, there's a group of us that do it. And we've taken cement, you know, the old, old ones and propped them up and set them up and put them in a frame and put the cement and then a couple of times, a couple of guys come down and they put bolts in them, you know, and then cement them, but there's ways of doing it, not very expensive.
Well, that's, uh, okay, so we need, uh, what do you want, a motion, Mel, to, uh?
Yeah, you know, I don't.
Did I confuse it all?
Well, no, not at all.
It'd be good to have a motion to accept the transfer of the responsibility and the money, just so it's on record twenty years down the road. We're trying to figure out what really happened.
Is there a deed?
According to Susan, yes. According to Susan, it's his property, it's, the city of Virgin's owns this, uh, piece of property.
I second what Pete said.
Joan, you think you got some?
Can write it now.
We accept the responsibility of maintaining the old cemetery and the transfer of the funds currently.
In excess of twenty-seven thousand.
You got it?
Yep.
Joan, and Randy seconded that? Uh, open up for further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So carried? City managers, oops, sorry.
So, if anybody thinks that what I was saying has any merit to it, then how are we gonna follow this up? Does that mean that I could be calling the service club and stuff like that, or what?
If you would like to take that out, um, do you have it, Mel?
I don't have a problem with that. I can tell you that we, the, the public works through, you know, cemeteries are time consuming from a maintenance standpoint, and they, 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 uh, that just cannot be absorbed by the existing public works crew. All right, and so it either needs to be contracted out or adopted by, uh, by one or more parties. And, uh, um.
Could you contact Gary Lewis and find out who took care of it last year? They did an outstanding job. I mean, I've seen many years of that being dealt with and some very sadly years. And, but last year was one of the best. I used to have to go up with my weed whacker and, you know, try to catch up a little bit. My wife would say, where'd you go to?
Well, maybe Mel can do that one, cause I'm gonna have to do something to the ser- service clubs and some of the groups to see.
Right, yeah, I'm fine.
All right, find out who it was and, and we get it. Okay, great. All right, now we are at city managers' report.
Uh, first item, as I mentioned, uh, there was one item that came in today, as a matter of fact, which requires city council authorization. And I, I know that, you know, the council, you know, allows me to go after any, any kind of grants that I, that I seem reasonable. And some of the grants that we run across, that there is a requirement of, uh, of a legislative, of a, of action by the legislative body authorizing the application. Uh, Vtrans and the downtown, uh, organization have come up with a pot of money, and I really don't know how much is in the pot, to do, uh, improvements in the downtown that are ADA related. And when you look through the application, uh, it's not about doing streetscape projects or, or, you know, ramps to, to buildings, it's really about ADA compliance, which would, you know, include, um, uh, you know, the, uh, the intersections of our sidewalks with roads. Uh, it could include where people have like pu- push buttons to make the traffic light, do something. It's, it's, uh, where there's, let's say that there's an island in the middle of the road that's not, uh, handicap accessible, uh, like a stopping point in the middle of the road. These are just some examples I give. Tara Brooks and I have, have met and, uh, what we, and the deadline is midnight on Monday. And so what we would, uh, the, the project that we've come up with is to just, uh, canvas the entire downtown area, all right? Now, some of our intersections are absolutely fine. The project that we did, uh, last year, you know, that intersection is fine, the intersection down at the basin block is fine. Uh, the one at Classic Stitching is fine, a number of our intersections are fine. But there's a lot of them that aren't, they don't have the metal plates and this type of thing. So these, this kind of a project is, is really, um, there, it's like a lot of projects. It's a lot of mini projects to, uh, as a part, you know, that, which make up the whole. And so what, um, Tara and I would do is we would just go out with a camera and take a picture of every sidewalk intersection so that we have an inventory of all of those that need to be done. Some of the projects, I think of in front of, uh, in front of the Stevens house, you know, we've got a, a mess on our hands on that corner if you've looked, looked at it close enough. And so it would be an opportunity to, to not only make that, uh, complying ADA compliant, but, but, you know, freshen up the area a little bit, a little bit at the same time. So, that's the project, um, you know, I'm, I'm sorry about the late notice, but what I would, would ask for is a, a city council authorization to, uh, apply for this, uh, ADA, uh, grant funds, um, which is coordinated through Vtrans and, uh, in the downtown.
Is that just for Main Street?
It's anything that's in this, it's any, it has to be within our designated downtown area, so that map, so it would include.
Cause that sidewalk's all broken up now.
So, you know, it would include that area.
Gets the priority.
Been asking for three years, my city council can't get it done.
Because that is a serious issue.
Yeah, it's, uh, well, it, anything that, anything that's in, anything that's in the, in the downtown is eligible.
Okay.
All right, now, and I really don't know, uh, you know, how, how, two, how much is too much to ask for? And I, I think we just ask for them all.
Go for it, sure. Randy makes a motion, has for a second?
Second.
Bill made the second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? So carried, Mel?
Uh, just three other, uh, excuse me, four other quick things. One is, uh, I, uh, I'm about ninety-nine percent done, the, the so-called Lister's Punch List I worked on today. And that's because I got a call from Chris Rockwood, uh, this, this, uh, this afternoon, and he's coming to town on Thursday. This Lister's Punch List is, it's, it's basically everything that has to be done to put the grand list together for two thousand and twelve. You know, a lot of it's administrative, but in Chris's case, he does all of the field work, uh, uh, that, based on all the zoning permits that have been issued and any improvements done over the last couple of years. So he's coming on Thursday, uh, to do that work. Uh, the other thing that we uncovered is that when APUS did their reappraisal, there's about twelve properties that we do not, uh, we do not have sketch plans in the, in the, in the database. It's, uh, at one point, I just had, had Leslie go property by property by property to see if in fact we had a, a sketch of every property, and there was a handful that we don't have anything. And so Chris is gonna fill all those holes, uh, so that now the cost sheets and the sketch plans are all, have all been filed, you know, are all filed away for, for easy retrieval. Uh, just wanna talk a little bit about recycling rates. Uh, one of the things that we've done, Rennie, uh, we started last year was, in essence, looking at and adopting the recycling budget prior to the normal budget process. And the, the reason obviously is because the contracts that we have with the surrounding towns are on a fiscal year now and, uh, and I can't remember, that flipper, flip-flop around. Yeah, so that's on a fiscal year. So I, uh, work with Casella on negotiating that, that contract for the next fiscal year, and I've done that. I have not put it into a spreadsheet, uh, to be able to calculate the, uh, the corresponding shares of, of Virgin's, Ferrisburg, Pantin, Walt, Ham and Addison. So, I'm, I'm gonna bring that to you in a, in a spreadsheet form. Uh, I, uh, I think that we, I'm quite certain that we will not have to raise that contract. I, I think that we're in a position where we might be able to lower it a little bit more. Uh, the materials, uh, go to Casella's facility in Rutland now. They, they started going there last November. Uh, the tipping fee at the Chittenden County facility with five dollars a ton, the tipping fee at the Casella facility in, in Rutland is zero, all right? And so we did see a little reduction in our rate last November, and, uh, that's con- uh, continued on, so I'll get you that, uh, get you that number.
While you're right on that one, um, we're gonna be inviting Cheryl, uh, to the next meeting to give us a brief on Addison County solid waste, and we'll try to see if we can get some of our other visitors at that same time. Uh, sorry. You do? Much to my chagrin, some, I'm sorry.
Your conversations are a waste.
There, there, sounds like there is some possibility of like a wholesale change in the recycling which might be extremely financially advantageous to everybody in the district, basically, because of some changes that have happened down there. And I presume, but are we too late to be able to take advantage of that with the, what you're talking about, sharing the budgets with the other places?
We're, we're, we're never too late relative to this, because the relationship that we have with Casella is a rate guarantee as opposed to a contract.
Yeah.
So, uh, uh, so, uh, they guarantee their rate, but we're, but we're not signed into that, to that
Okay.
a known period of time, all right? But I will tell you that Cheryl and I have, have, had tons of e- email exchanges about, about what the district is doing. Because the district has, has, it now is a single stream recipient of recyclables. And, you know, I've emailed Cheryl and, and spoke to Katie Johnson down there. And based on the information that I have, uh, it's good that there's another entity in here. But the numbers that I have, uh, there, there doesn't appear at this point for, to. to roll that into our program, that, that there's any advantage to us at this point. But, you know, we will, we'll watch, we'll certainly watch the numbers.
My question was more just about timing than...
Yeah, no, it's fine, yeah. The other thing that I'm going to bring to you, just for confirmation, is relative to the swimming pool rates. We're in the swimming business, swimming pool business, Randy.
Always knew we would be eventually.
And I, I can almost assure you that there's no, there will not be any recommended changes in rates. One thing that's related to this, that I, if I find time to bring, is, is to take a look at our watershed recreation reserve policy, and revisit the six thousand dollars that we allocate to them. And I'll, I'll give an explanation to the council and a recommendation as to, as to that contribution, and to, and to what degree. So it was eighty-one degrees, and we had people calling, wondering if the pool was going to be open tomorrow.
On, on that note, also, just to let you know, sorry to miss any work, there's going to be some, I think on June twenty-third, I'll get you out the information. David Cohen's been in touch.
Oh, okay.
And there's going to be something going on at the pool, some sort of a, I don't know if it's a celebration, or dedication, or something, in June. So something's going to be happening then.
The, the other thing, I'm just, I just, I gave everybody a copy of the, of this draft. It really is a draft city council calendar. One of the things that, that is a little different, as, as all of you know, I'm going in for bilateral knee replacement surgery on May twenty-third. And therefore, uh... Yeah, golf season is shocking, Randy. So anyway, what I've put together here is a schedule a little bit around my surgery, in that typically, I deliver a draft budget to the city council at the last meeting in May, and then spend June working on budgets, and adopt a budget, and set a tax rate as late in the month of June as possible. Now, obviously, I'm out of here, and so therefore, you can see how the whole budget, my budget submission and, and city council budget review needs to occur in May, as opposed to June. But I hope to be able to be back at this table by June twenty-sixth. It's being a little, maybe a little ambitious, but that's my goal. The other thing is, as, as Shannon talked, the, the DRB is meeting, they have a special meeting scheduled for, for April second. They hope to be able to finish their work on April, April second. You know, so there's a late night for this group. I can see that, I can see that coming. And, and, but I can tell you the goal of this group is to indeed, you know, the, the minutes, Shannon's already taken the notes from the last meetings. Shannon and I will work together to put together a set of minutes. And so the, the minutes to the DRB meeting, which also went through the regs and the testimony from, from last night, are going to be talked about and incorporated into, into the planning commission's proposal. And one of the things, the way that it works is, is the planning commission, when they have a public hearing, that they can take testimony on that, uh, they take testimony, and they have the right to change their proposal and send it to the city council, all right? They don't have to, they don't have to go back and have another public hearing. It's just the, that's the process that they, that they have. So at this point, in your April tenth packet, will be the official proposal from the planning commission. By law, the, the city council is required to have a public hearing on that proposal. You can't touch it. You must have a public hearing on that proposal, not less than fifteen, nor more than a hundred and twenty days. And so I've plugged in here a possible hearing date on that proposal for the first of May. And then, so the city council would have a public hearing on the first of May. Based on that testimony, the city council would begin their deliberations and discussion about changes. If you have any, if, if, I'm going to assume you're going to have some testimony, and I'm going to assume you're going to want to talk about some changes. Every time that this board makes any changes to that proposal, you must have another public hearing. And if you have another public hearing, and you're going to make more changes, you must have another public hearing. And you keep having hearings after hearings after hearing, until you either burnt through three hundred and sixty-five days, and it's done, all right? Or you adopt it in its last warned form, okay? So I've got two hearings in here. There could be three, there could be five, if this thing can go on. So this is the way that I've put this together, that the, the, the city council would have its first public hearing on May one. And then unfortunately, I know the timing's not good here. You got budget work in front of you, and you got a hundred and forty-two pages of zoning regulations in front of you. I know, it's, it's not good timing, but that's what you've got. And that realistically, and I'm not, don't feel compelled about July ten. I mean, it, it could be earlier than July ten, it could be later than July ten. It's when, it's when the city council feels that it's got a document ready to go to, go to a, a public hearing. So, and the rest of it is pretty straightforward. As you can see, I've got a couple of months in there, trying to, trying to have you only have one meeting a month. But I can tell you, summer isn't looking real good for you, as it relates to this here. So anyway, if you can check your anniversaries, check your birthdays, check, check your vacations, check all that, and, and see if, if you've got some things in here that just, you got too many people, it's got conflicts. So what I'd like everybody to do, just a little homework, is for everybody to look at this with their own personal schedules, and then come back at the next meeting. And if there's some meetings that you know you can't be here, let's, let's, let's bring those up. And if we need to move something around, we'll move it around. If, if not, you can put this right on your refrigerator, and you're, you're good to go.
What I'd also like to do is, once it is kind of close to locked in, we'd like to put it on the web, realizing that we can change it at any point in time. So if we make some adjustments, we'll update it.
That's all I had, Mike.
Okay, just another comment here, before we go too far. You saw the memo from the, to the council, or to Mel and myself, from the ALIS member. And again, that will be, that information will be looked at when we start working budgets. Okay, now, Joan's going to keep me straight on this. But first, we're, I'm going to read off, we're going to take and go to liquor, tobacco, and entertainment separately. I'm going to read the names of the liquor licenses. I will then ask for a motion in a second. We will vote on that, close that out. We will go to tobacco, do the same, and then live entertainment. How's that, Joan? Okay?
I have a question.
Yes.
When it comes to antidote, you're going to do all the facts on one?
We're going to do, we're going to do just the liquor licenses first, okay?
Individually?
No, as a group.
So how do I call this, with the antidote?
You can say in favor with an abstention for antidote.
All right.
Okay.
Ditto what you did.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, liquor licenses. Addison County Eagles, American Legion Post fourteen, Bar Anecdote, Black Sheep Bistro, Champlain Farms, City Limits nightclub, Kenny Drugs, Shaw's Supermarket, Small City Market, Strong House Inn, Three Squares Cafe, Upper Top Tavern, Vergens Redemption Center, Vergens Wine. I'd ask for a motion.
Make said motion.
Randy made the motion, ask for a second.
Second.
Peter made the second. All those in, oh, oops, go ahead, Randy.
Just a question. Have we had any particular problems with any of these that the police have reported?
Not, not in the past year.
Okay, any other questions, comments? And Ziggy would like to abstain from Bar Anecdotes?
Correct.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, passed. Now tobacco license. American Legion Post fourteen, Bar Anecdote, Champlain Farm, City Limits nightclub, Kenny Drugs, Shaw's Supermarket, Small City Market, Vergens Redemption Center, Vergens Wine. I'd ask for a motion. Randy made the motion, ask for a second.
Second.
Peter makes the second. Any other discussion?
Got a question. Is American Legion Bar Anecdote and City Limits selling cigarettes?
Yes.
American Legion is.
Bar Anecdote, I think, sells cigars.
Cigars, or something like that.
Yeah, that could be. Vergens Wine sells cigars.
Right, I was just concerned with the nightclub, because there's no smoking within these premises.
Right, but they don't want their customer leaving, going to the store to buy them. They might go home.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking a clarification.
Or get picked up.
Okay. May I answer my question?
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor for the tobacco license with a one abstention from Bar Anecdote from Ziggy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Live entertainment licenses. Addison County Eagles, American Legion Post fourteen, Bar Anecdote, City Limits nightclub, Three Squares Cafe.
And Michael, this, this motion typically has a, a condition that during, during the time of live entertainment, all exterior doors shall remain closed.
With that portion, I'd ask for a motion amended to that. Ziggy made the motion.
I second.
Joe seconded. And Ziggy will abstain from Bar Anecdote on this. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Have this wrapped up in just a few seconds, people. I'd like to thank Mr. Jim Ringer for supplying a great bunch of pictures that we were able to display during the annual meeting, preface, yeah, before it. I've also got some comments last year, and again this year, about some things that happened at the meeting. I welcome them, I encourage them. By all means, make your thoughts known. I am open for suggestions. City meetings, town meetings are a dying issue. People don't go to those. The last four years, I think we're actually seeing an increase in attendance. And we had about seventy-five, Joan, this year. Okay, I know that I had ninety chairs set up.
We had seventy-two with my wife over there.
I counted you while you were there.
We won't hold that against her, but we hope she's healing well.
She is, thank you.
Good. So again, please, bring your, your wishes known. I'm trying to add more to that, something to draw the crowd, and whatever we can do, I'd like to do it at least one more year. So, having said that, I'd ask for a motion for adjournment.
Move your adjourn.
Peter? Peter, do I have a second?
Second.
Bill seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're going home anyways.